Okay, welcome to you all. Welcome to the Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted to have you all with us this evening. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and start? Maybe give us an update, a couple of issues of general concern?
Well, thank you, Mayor Todd, members of council. What I wanted to discuss with the council, in addition to the items listed on the agenda, is just since we are together in a work session, just to provide an update on the flooding that did occur over the weekend, and additional, a little bit of discussion about some of the parking issues that we're working on in the downtown. But I thought it might be useful, since we do have people here who are here to present on their item, maybe just start with that.
Sure.
On the Affordable Living Policy, and then we can have the discussion on the two items that I just listed.
Okay.
We do have a closed session at the end of our listed items as well.
All right, well, maybe after the Affordable Living Policy, we can go on to those issues, as are certainly of great concern, great concern to a lot of folks in town.
Indeed.
So, why don't we start then with the Affordable Living Policy update? Mr. Shields, do you want to tee that up for us?
Well, very good. And what I'd like to do is invite Mr. Chaney, and Ms. Lewis, and Ms. Vincent to the table to present the report from the task force to update the city's affordable housing policy. And you'll notice that the policy is being named the Affordable Living Policy, and I think it is the view of the task force that that's the more descriptive name for what this policy is trying to get at. And the last time our policy was updated was just over five years ago. It has been our goal and our intention to keep that policy updated and fresh, and on a five-year cycle, similar to our comprehensive plan. So, the intention tonight is to get the council's feedback on this draft policy, but then also to request that this be placed on the agenda next week for a formal referral out to boards and commissions. And so, tonight is really just discussion with that requested action next week. Then this would come back to the council in November for your final consideration and adoption. So, with that, I would turn it over to Ms. Lewis and Mr. Chaney for the report.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to introduce Craig Chaney. He was, has been the chair of our Affordable Living Task Group, and some of you were on there as well, and we appreciate that. And so, he's going to be giving the presentation this evening. He was on the last, the 2013 version that we prepared as well, and so, I'm going to let him pass it to him.
Thanks, Dana. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight representing the task force. The names of the task force members in the form of the policy, still looking at last time, I think was a very representative group from a variety of constituencies in the city. Developers, a couple of teachers, a user of affordable housing in the city. We had a group number of city council members who attended some of our meetings, and we really appreciated the effort people put in, and particularly the staff support that we got, because we did ask a lot of questions around information that we needed and.
Oh, is that better? All right, sorry about that. One of the things we did in 2013 was to begin to put some data together, not only in the policy itself, but in the appendices around, because affordable housing really is many, many things, and many, many programs, and we support them in different ways. And so, one of the activities that we did this time was to ask the staff to do an update to those activities. I think the other comment I would make in introduction is, we had some, for those of you who might have attended some of our meetings, we had some lively conversations around, hey, a number of issues that were very, very dear to the members of the committee, and I think that's an important element to capture here, that there was, there was a lot of feeling that this was a critical issue. It's an issue that's very hard to get your arms around. There's no easy solution. There's no magic solution. No one else has really figured it out either. So, we're going to wrestle with this, and we need to think about this for the long term. And there's some things we can do, and then some things that, you know, that are a little bit out of our control. And ultimately, in the end, I think I said to Mr. Lickenhouse at one point, you guys have an opportunity, and in the way that the things are structured with special exceptions, you get to do the final balancing of all the proffers that get offered, and the way things come out. Our job was to make a pretty strong statement about what we thought was important, that the policy should reflect, and the consideration that you should give to this aspect of all the different elements that go into new development, and the maintenance of the existing programs that we have. So, this is certainly, we recognize not the be-all and end-all, and the final barrier or the final target, but we think it's important that people realize where we stand, and the goals that we have for the future. So, with that, I would just, the staff report, by the way, I thought was excellent. It really kind of summarizes some of the things we recommended. I just wanted to highlight three things tonight as we, as we get into the discussion. The first one is, on page four of the policy, it's about the metrics and where we stand with affordable housing in the city. It's basically, for those of you who don't have it in front of you, it's a comparison between where we were in 2012, where we are in 2017, and the idea of having a target. The area that I would call out to your attention is that, in preserving the current stock of affordable market rate rental units in the city, the first line, we have dropped in five years from 224 units to 27 units at the 60% area median income. And 60%, you might say, well, why 60? Why not another number? That was the number we used in 2013, so that's the comparable number, and that's obviously a pretty significant drop. We did include in your appendices, the 80% number. There's more units at the 80% AMI target level than at 60, but we use 60 for, you know, you know, policy-to-policy comparisons. What it really begins to say is the second point I want to make, which is, the struggle that somewhat we face is, what populations do we need to serve? We typically serve those units, or those populations with a higher AMI, and part of the recommendations that I'll get into in a minute are, when it comes to the opportunity, we would recommend that for rental units, we look at a lower AMI percentage to target those populations, recognizing that in the course of doing that, we might not get as many units. But we clearly have a very underserved population below 80%, down in the 60% level. We're losing those units that are affordable at 60% of AMI. And we try to define all those terms in here, because they get somewhat technical. But the bottom line is, the, we're seeing a gap, and maybe, maybe it's a normal gap in this community with all the increased costs of housing, but nonetheless, we are seeing that pretty starkly in the numbers that we face in the city. And so, some of the recommendations that we made in, on page five, in our policy recommendations or changes, are to think about targeting a lower AMI percentage when we can, 30% to 50% of AMI. And that, right there, whoever's scrolling, you hit the mark right on the, right on the head. And where there may be a possibility of looking at lower AMI populations, if the opportunity presents itself, we ought to seriously think about that, even if we don't get as many units, and that's part of the trade-off, because it's going to cost the developer more, and as a result, you know, maybe not get as many units. But it is a very underserved population in this area. The last policy area I would highlight, and again, it's kind of on the screen right now, and probably the one that we had the most conversation about, not only in the group, but later on with the city attorney. And I just want to highlight that conversation so that you're aware of it, and she can correct me on all the technical details. But one of the concerns, we, in our discussions with the work group, suggested that the goal of the number of ADUs as a percent of new developments should be increased from the current 6% policy to an 8% to 10% policy, a range of 8% to 10%. And the city attorney flagged for us the concern that she had, that in 2004, correct, 2004 court case?
Yes.
Okay. 2004 court case in Arlington, the 10% level was challenged by a developer, and ultimately, the court held that that was, Arlington didn't have the jurisdiction to do that, and was concerned about the fact that we had recommended a higher-than-6% level. So, the language that you see here is her recommendation, which we accepted for presentation tonight. But I think it's important that you realize that the work group did recommend an attempt to try to increase the percentage of units from 6% to a higher number. So, I am not an attorney, and I put that on the table as a risk management factor. I think we talked in the conversation with the city council members in the group, that this was an element that we, they wanted us to address, and we made a recommendation, and I just want to be fair to the work group, we did say an 8% to 10% recommendation, and we have now the above 6% in policy recommendation language. So, in the course of your conversation this evening, your questions recommending that this get put out to boards and commissions, I just want to put it on the record that we did have that, that other conversation, and represent, you know, the nature of the conversation in the work group and the task force. So, those are the main elements. I think we did, oh, I guess the one other I would highlight is, there's always been a question in people's minds, if you do get cash contributions from developers in lieu of units, it goes into an affordable housing fund, what do you do with that? You know, what possibly, what possibly, you never, you're probably not, I won't say never, you're probably not going to get enough funding to do a standalone project, because it takes a lot of money to support a standalone affordable dwelling unit. I think the group would have loved to see the city find a way to do that. So, what could you do meaningful with any cash contributions? And our suggestion was that you relook at starting a first-time homeowner program that was in place a while ago, and I'll let staff tell me the years it was in place. There was a program that was an assistance program for certain levels of income, and it did fund four or five first-time homebuyers, and provided a contribution to their down payment. And our recommendation is, to the degree that funds are received in lieu of cash, and that's certainly part of the potential negotiations you could, you could end up with, that the first-time homeowner, homeowner program be rethought of as a viable one. And I will tell you very honestly, the teachers who represented the, on the work group, you know, really do feel the challenge of finding a place to buy in the city. There are potential units to rent with teacher assistance, but once you earn out of certain levels of income, you're no longer eligible. And there are, the two teachers who represented us were very adamant that they would love to find a way to own in the city, and they felt like that was, you know, almost an impossibility, given where they are, and they were, they were not first-year teachers, they were more experienced teachers. So, we certainly listened to that, that part of the conversation, and I think that was the genesis for recommending or making that recommendation, that that's, that program restart. So, I think, I think that covers the main elements, Dana. Did I miss anything in terms of the main conversation?
Thank you.
And again, I think the staff report adds to the detail, but we really appreciate the opportunity to present tonight, and we did ask, by the way, for a 60-day comment period, and that was based on originally going to be presenting in August. We didn't want to have people not meeting in the 30-day cycle, was just starting up with a new school year. So, that was actually our request. I don't know if that's still a viable, Dana, I know it's in there, but I don't, that was, that was generated by the fact that if we had asked in August, we'd be coming back in September, and we, all boards and commissions may not have had a chance to weigh in meaningfully, given, given the summer break. So, that was the reason for our original 60-day request. So, with that, I will stop and be happy to take questions.
All right. Well, listen, first off, thank you for the great work you and the group did. We know you spent a lot of time and effort and put a lot of thought into this, so we greatly appreciate it. I know there's going to be a lot of questions and comments, so why don't I turn it over to the floor? Ms. Hardy, you want to start?
Great, thank you. I'll reiterate what the mayor said. Thank you for serving on this the second time around, Mr. Chaney, and thank you all to the vice mayor for serving as the liaison to this. I think even though I'm the housing commission liaison, I wanted more people in council to be involved, and so, I think it's great that we got other council members aware of this, because I've seen a lot of this data myself. One, I think overall, absolutely support the principle behind the policy changes. I think, I also really like the name change, because I think housing being a big component of living, I think it's just important to think about it more comprehensively. So, I really think it's important to be revisiting this. I think it's important to the values that we've talked about, economic development, and really our kind of viability as an independent city in the future, I think hinges on some of this too. So, I'm glad that we are revisiting it. I did have questions on some of the data, as well as the recommendations. So, on slide, page eight, when you were talking about kind of where the current stock is, and what 2017 looked like, given the goal to preserve the current market rate, am I understanding that, given that we don't, no longer have the 224 market rate units, when you say preserve 224, the group is recommending that we actually add 224?
Now, I think we talked about that. We decided that, given the original goal in 2013 was a, was a certain target, we didn't feel as given an update, we were going to re-baseline the target. So, the target is essentially the same thing as it was in 2013. So, we did not, we consciously decided not to change the target in this update unless we were asked to do so. So, the target is simply reflecting where we said in 2013, we would hope the baseline would stay, and obviously, we're, we're short in that area. Now, we were up in a couple areas, which is good, but we, we did not re-baseline the targets as part of our work group effort.
Got it. So, my understanding is that we, because of Lee Square and Merrill House, essentially raising the rents, which is due to market conditions, right? That's why we lost about 200 units?
That's correct.
And so, unless something happened to rent prices, we're not going to get those back.
Right. And I would just say, again, the staff did an excellent job. They went through unit by unit by unit, or complex by complex, and looked at the rents and did the calculations. So, this was based on a, you know, very micro-scale bottoms-up analysis to get us these numbers. And that's why we decided, again, to conclude the 80% numbers, because some of the 60s did meet the 80% thresholds, and so, in the appendix, we added the 80% numbers.
Got it. So, on an absolute basis, we decreased, clearly because we've lost those market rate ones, but, so in order to even get back to where we were 2012, we have to add either through inclusionary zoning ones, like the committed ADUs, or some other way of adding units, right?
That's correct. And again, I'll just reflect that that's at 60% of AMI, to be fair, and as opposed to another, you could have chosen an 80% threshold, we, we just didn't in 2013, so.
Okay. And then, you talked a bit about kind of ownership, which I think is important to think about diversity, kind of how to help, but given the, the high cost of living, high cost of land values and property values, and I guess limited resources, what are the group's thoughts on kind of the mix of ownership versus rental? Because I guess clearly, we could help a lot more people if we put that effort towards rental units, because I think helping down payment, we probably end up, I think you said there were a handful of people we helped last time around. Did the group have thoughts on that?
I think we recognize that rentals is going to provide more units, and, and the homeowner, the ownership piece, we recognize is going to probably always be a smaller number. I don't think we set a priority. I think, I think ultimately, we, you know, listened to Mr. Duncan, Ms. Conley, and Mr. Lickenhouse about the fact that in the end, a lot of this is developer-driven, and we had Bob Young and Ed Novak on the group too, and, you know, they basically were very good at telling us, a lot of this is project-by-project, economic-by-economic kind, you know, basis, and the flexibility to work with you to get what ultimately makes the project work, and at the same time maximize their contributions, is, is a good policy. The idea of that flexibility and that negotiating. So, we don't necessarily establish a clear, this is our number-one priority. We recognize there has to be, there will continue to be a trade-off in ownership versus, versus rental.
Okay. And on the cash in lieu of, did you all talk about formulas or potential kind of value, valuation of how to negotiate?
I think we talked with staff about the fact that they would feel more comfortable, we didn't have to put a specific formula in, but the staff would have, have some formulas that they could put forward as part of their staff work that would be representative of that. I mean, Dana, is that, is that correct?
Is that something we could see for next week's meeting, or is it something that will kind of take longer?
Well, we have. Okay. We have two potential formulas that could be used, and I don't know that we've decided if we.
Maybe you can go to Housing Commission, and they could discuss it there.
Yeah, that would probably be, because we have a Housing Commission meeting next week.
Yeah. So, where I was going with that is, as we talk about kind of replenishing the Affordable Housing Fund, I think we have like 200,000 or so in there right now, and we think more seriously about either doing a standalone project or preserving the fields, because as we think about market rate, or even like what's left out there, the field is 90-some units. And so, if we think about what we might need to preserve that, and thinking what the fund is worth, that's where the cash in lieu of could be a really nice infusion, and I think we've got a few years of time to work on that, but I don't want us to forget about that opportunity. So, if we know how much we need, and how much we need to negotiate for, then we can also figure out, well, is that a budget conversation? Is that other sources of revenue we should be thinking about, if we have a target in mind? Okay. I think that was it. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Chaney, for tackling this one more time, and also, all the other members of the committee. Appreciate your perspective and good temper about this difficult issue. So, of the many issues that we face here in town, you know, there's problems, challenges, crises, and genuine emergencies, and looking just at the numbers that this report presents us with, it seems to me like in this area of affordable living, we have gone beyond challenge and problem to genuine crisis verging on emergency. I don't, I don't really see how the numbers add up to achieving the goals that we've set for ourselves in this policy, unless there's a, you know, a dramatic change in the way that we're approaching this. I mean, now, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, and help me with the math, but if, if the goal is to increase the current stock of ADUs by 150 in 2022, and we're going at a rate of 6% on every new project that we get, how many market rate units do we have to build at 6% to get 150? What is that number? Isn't it something like 2,000 or some such?
It's a lot of units, yes.
I mean, it's just, I mean, considering that we've been knocking ourselves out here over the last seven or eight years to, to develop new projects, and doing a great job of it, and getting good, you know, cooperation from developers who seem to understand the value of affordable housing in, in a full community that we aspire to be, given all of that effort, we, we haven't built anywhere near 2,400 units. And that leads me to ask, how do we generate a sense of broader civic concern about this over the next two months, so that there is some push to do something different, to do something new, to do something more? You know, we're just not going to get where we need to go if we're using the percentage of new mixed-use development as our tool. I mean, what strikes me in looking at these numbers is that we're a pretty successful community at the concentrated affordable housing living model. I mean, you look at Cherry Hill, you got 80 units there, you look at the Fields, I mean, it's not, you got 96 there, Virginia Village, I mean, there's several examples of places where, you know, we have fairly concentrated affordable housing communities, and yet, there seems to be this inexplicable, to me, aversion to trying to create new models of that kind of community. And you read about them every day. I mean, all I have to do is just read the online development news coming out of Reston, and Tysons, and DC, and Alexandria, you know, and place after place after place. You know, developers are building dozens, hundreds of affordable living units, and they're nice-looking buildings, they've got, you know, mixed-use, they got ground-level retail, they've got, you know, not amenities on the par, maybe of your, you know, five-star buildings that we're building here now, but, you know, good amenities. So, what I would like to see us do is, as a community, you know, spend the next 60, even 90 days, if it takes a little bit longer, going out and really having a conversation through the boards and commissions with citizens about why we don't seem to be, you know, kicking the ball on this one, as far as we should. And, you know, I would, I would love to see the final report, try to express things positively. I would love to support a final report, which has a significant section that speaks to the option of concentrated housing dedicated to affordable living. I don't believe there's anything in the current document that includes that as one of the levers that we could pull as decisively as I think we need to pull it to get anywhere near the numbers that we're talking about.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you. I would just, I would add three things, or three, make three comments. One, there was, there was part of the rationale for going up a little bit from 6 to 8 to 10, and whatever the number is, is not going to solve the problem overnight. 8 to 10 is not. I think the last bullet in, on page five, that runs over on page six, does talk about, you know, when the opportunity arises with major new developments, i.e., e.g., the West End Project, the city will encourage new forms of affordable housing, such as mixed and dedicated housing development that includes affordable housing. I think the group did express some hope that in the course of developing the West End, there might be an opportunity for affordable housing, not only for popular, income-based groups, but certainly, you know, other populations that are looking, Miller House is a very, very tiny step in the right direction, very right direction, but that's not going to deal with that community need either. And so, there's, there's that component that needs to be, you know, discussed. Is it even possible to take an element of the West End Project and find some way to put 40, or 50, or 60, or whatever the number is, units in a dedicated facility up there as part of that development? And is that a value that the community would embrace? And is that something that, I get it, it's not economically the same, but is it something that we say, this is really important? The third one, and this is again, somewhat controversial, and this is in the last page, page six, regional cooperation. This wording changed a little bit from before. There's, there's a conversation that did happen in the group about whether or not the city would ever use some of its funding to coordinate with a Fairfax, or an Arlington, or another nearby jurisdiction, and contribute a portion of funding that would help build a dedicated set of units outside potentially the jurisdiction of the city, but nonetheless serve city residents. Now, one argument is clearly, that would serve people who need the housing. The other argument is, but we're not leaving them in the city of Falls Church, we're taking them outside the jurisdiction, and therefore, we're, you know, taking the problem away from us, and we're not dealing with it internally. That's a philosophy issue. That's, that's an issue of, if you had 30, you know, units in seven corners, that Falls Church residents could all of a sudden take advantage of, isn't, is that a positive, or is that a abrogation of our responsibilities, responsibilities as citizens of Falls Church? I see it either way, but it's also a discussion that we should have. So, where is the regional cooperation debate, and where, you know, is that something we want to talk about as well? Our unfunding helps, you know, we can't do it alone, but we can coordinate with, with others to do it. So, small elements, not going to get there overnight, but, but things that we could think about.
Well, thank you for those responses. I don't want to go on too much further, because I've said in my piece, I think, but at least on the regional question, which I saw in the report, my personal opinion is that, you know, if, if we could use some of our resources beyond our borders, just because of our size and the outrageous expense of land here, if we could use some of our resources to help, you know, particularly very lower income, I mean, I'm talking, you know, 30 to 40 in our surrounding jurisdictions, that would be acceptable to me, as long as, you know, the city of Falls Church is doing its part in its boundaries for a population that, you know, can reasonably be addressed if we set our priorities in alignment with the vision statement that we all, you know, approved and endorse.
I just want to add one other thing, and then, the backup of the document is a whole series of appendices where we kind of aggregate the data from a number of programs at the city. I want to make it clear, the city supports a lot of programs that contribute to affordable living, you know, CDBG grants, Community Services Fund grants, lots of other programs, and we thought it was important to get a complete picture, that those data also be included as an appendix to the report, so people do get a sense that it's not only the units, there's, there's other kinds of programs that are out there, rental assistance, tax relief, et cetera. Those are all part of the, you know, formula for affordable living, if you will, and those are important things to keep in mind. I mean, I know we boil it down sometimes to the numbers that want to provide those, but we also want to provide a pretty complete picture of the data for all the ways that the city does provide some degree of support.
Well, thank you, and, you know, again, I think this, I hope it's just the beginning of a vigorous conversation that we'll have this fall. I mean, you know, when somebody gets their car towed from a parking space, parking is a crisis. I know that. I've had my car towed from a parking space that I shouldn't have parked in, and that makes headlines, and a lot of people talk about it, and they get upset about it. But the problem with the affordable housing issue is that, you know, nobody is pulling up to somebody's door and, you know, yanking their stuff out, and, you know, taking it across the border and dumping it somewhere. And so, it doesn't get the attention and publicity that it deserves, but in fact, that is what is happening. We are pricing people out of this city who are, you know, our public workforce, there are teachers, there are, you know, city employees, there are, you know, people who service in the restaurants, there are people who work in the businesses. service in the restaurants, there are people who work in the businesses, and, you know, that's just a part of our community that we need to pay more attention to. Uh, as we go about all the other very important things that we're doing and meeting all the very important priorities that we're meeting, uh, this is a group of people who, you know, don't always call out for attention, and yet we need to tend to them. And, and so I look forward to you all using whatever means necessary, you know, publicity-wise, to try to get a conversation going about that this fall.
All right, other questions or comments? Mr. Z.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Dana and Craig for working on this. I really liked the title of the, uh, this section. Affordable living, I think, is what resonates with me and I'm sure, well, with others as well, as opposed to just affordable housing, which I think is a little bit narrow. During my time here on council and slightly before, I've tried to help stand up and watch two affordable housing projects die. One would have displaced most of West End Park, and the other one would have been on Maple. So, um, that makes me a little bit gun-shy about going into this one more time and, and suffering the same sort of result. I would, however, reflecting on, on our progress, draw council's attention, everyone who is watching this to Appendix B, style is page 16 of this report, that points to what some of the other jurisdictions have done, notably, um, the city of Alexandria, that, that dedicates one-third of any incremental increase in density or height bonus to affordable housing. Uh, I'm not quite sure, I know what, how that affordable housing is characterized, but I'm sure that if someone were to ask you in the coming weeks and months, that you'll have an answer for what is exactly that. Um, so having said that, let me ask you whether you are able to tell me at this time, tell us that, uh, with the increase in AMI from 80 to 120% index, what would, what's, what is the size of that demographic? Do you have a, a number of people or families?
I don't have the number right now.
Sure.
I have information, it'd be in the comprehensive plan. I'm sorry.
I'm sure you have that.
I don't have that breakdown right now, but that type of information will be in the comprehensive plan, um, all the demographics and that kind of thing, but I could provide it to you.
Well, if you could come prepared to discuss that at city council, uh, next time we meet.
Okay.
Be sure to ask that question again. Um, and then finally, as I'm going through here, I've found myself scratching my head a little bit because there seems to be one reservoir of funding available, and it could go a long ways to keeping our senior citizens in their houses, and of course, um, I would be remiss if I didn't say I knew more about the weatherization program, and that doesn't seem to appear anywhere in here. I understand the federal statutes do have really tight bounds around how much and what you can spend that money on, um, but it is free money after all. And I think that if you could do a little bit more work into that, and I'm going to make that easy for you, that NVRC has volunteered, the services of one of their subcontractors, LEAP, who has that information, and they can help you with the, uh, characterizing how that might be a little work for the city of Falls Church. Um, and anything that we can do bundled with other kinds of money to keep our senior citizens in their houses, I think would be all just good, especially if it means their bills are going to be decreased and they have a higher level of coverage. Fix some floors and ceilings and roofs as we go along. Now, I do have a bit of good news in that regard. The last energy bill that was signed out last year, um, has, as part of it, Dominion is responsible for, um, spending over the next few years, the amount of $847 million for efficiency. Now, they just call it efficiency, and we've seen efficiency, from my former perspective, that usually turns out to be a lot like weatherization, could be weatherization plus, could be a little bit more than that, um, and appliances. So I think this is certainly worth looking into, I mean, we're talking about thousands of dollars here. And, um, as I said, LEAP, I'm happy to forward to the contact information on how to put that in there. There are probably a bit more esoteric instruments available that they probably haven't even thought about yet, such as loan guarantees, or bonding, or other kinds of aggregation instruments, and, uh, I think that could be brought to bear and work for a place like the city of Falls Church that has a very sophisticated population. Thank you.
And I would just follow up on that and say, thank you, and I think part of, you've reinforced part of the reason why we felt affordable living might be a better term, because it really is, in some respects, about keeping people in the houses they already have and making sure that they can stay in those houses. So I, I think that's another reinforcement for the why the work group felt like that was a, a broader and better description of the overall support for keeping people available and affordable in the, in the units that they're in.
Other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Cheney and Ms. Lewis. As the council liaison to this committee, it was a, there were wide-ranging discussions, and the fact that it all ended up in a nice, tight report is a credit to your hard work because it was everywhere, those conversations.
Or miracle, depending on how.
Miracle, hard work and miracle all combined, so thank you for that. I do appreciate this section in here about working with other jurisdictions. I think that is an important area that we should really start to look at more robustly than we have to see what's out there, but as Mr. Duncan said, that, I think it was Mr. Duncan, the, uh, we don't want to send the challenge to somebody else to deal with, but how do we handle it on our own? So I think that's a really important thing. As far as affordable living versus affordable housing, I do like that it's called affordable living. I wonder if the word housing can still be in there somehow, though, because housing is what people understand, affordable living and housing, or, I don't know.
Yeah, we talked about that. I think, I think, I won't, I think, I think for positive reasons, the word affordable living was selected. I also think to some degree, affordable housing has a stigma.
Right.
And, and so the idea was, we really are looking at holistically supporting people to be able to afford to be in our community, and sometimes that's around housing, which is obviously a massive component of the economics, but it may be smaller things like Mr. Z said, you know, the ability to keep someone in their house and paid off their mortgage but can't afford their tax bill or their, you know, their energy costs, and there are things that could be invested in, and, you know, maybe, um, you know, this just gets to the next level of how do you structure these programs? Even a, you know, first-time homebuyer program, do you give a grant or do you do a loan and then repay back, and then you've got to do the lien process and, you know, and, and the whole issue of the covenants and how long they stay? I mean, all of those things get into, you know, economic and legal issues that have to be worked out to make them work well.
Right.
Um, and they're appealing, you know, but they're worth doing in many cases, and to think through those and establishing a framework, um, you know, if you can do a weatherization program through the federal government, are the constraints too tight? Or do they work well for the community of Falls Church? Have to explore all that. And thankfully, we have a great city staff who are very aware of these kinds of issues and can go off and take data requests and bring them back to you, because they do get into, you know, the minutia to make the programs, programs work. And every one of those ones in the appendix have their own minutia associated with how they get administered, which is, you know, obviously really important, but it's great resources.
Right, right, right. You just brought up the, um, the tax deferral and abatement issue, which is something that I think as a council we were supposed to address this summer, coming up into fall. Is that, is that on the docket to start to, were we appointing a committee?
We, uh, I confess, we did not get that done this summer, but we do plan to get that done this fall in time for action for, um, along the lines that we discussed last spring.
Because that might be something also just to add in here as a, a resource, is once we figure that one out, to be able to reference the fact that this ties into the fact that we're trying to also work on taxes.
And I think.
Did we choose not to do that?
Yeah, I, I just remember as part of HSEC, Human Services Advisory Council, we did get data on our program versus surrounding jurisdictions and how they work, and so there's some body of information out there, but I think there needed to be more work, we felt that, to do it.
Right.
Can I raise one other thing? I think this is kind of a, I probably should have mentioned this, and I think you've already kind of done this in your recent work. We did recommend that the covenants associated with affordable housing moved, we said in perpetuity, that's not legally the right language, with, with the, the life of the development or whatever the right words are. So I think you've already taken that action, I guess we would reinforce it, that we think that's really important, so whatever language is appropriate there, please adopt.
Yes, yes. So thank you again for your work on this.
All right, any other comments? Mr. Snyder?
Um, thank you for, for a lot of work. I first got started with the Falls Church Housing Corporation, so, um, this is a value which I, I think is embedded in our community. I think particularly the comments Councilmember Z made are worthy of following up. I think there's some interesting financing we haven't looked at. I think the weatherization program, I, I think he laid out some things that will sort of expand our horizon beyond just the sort of the categories of financing that we've thought of, um, so far. There's one area where I, I think we simply have to, to change recent behavior, and that's, I don't think we've built a new condo unit in this city in the last, what, five years or longer. Uh, every one of these developments comes through in the past year, 700 new units have been approved and not one of them is a condo. And I recall, I think, some very good scholarship that indicates that why some groups in our country are not equal financially is because they were denied the benefits of homeownership. And I think more than anything, a focus that I would like to see is on all future developments, that this council say to the developers, we insist on condos that are affordable to allow people to begin to climb up the ladder that we or generations before us have had the opportunity to do. So I would certainly put that at a very, very, uh, high priority. I think, um, there have been some other suggestions. I think your comments about raising from 6 to 8% makes sense to me. Uh, West End, focusing on the West End, it's our next great opportunity to really try to address the situation. Um, and I think the comments about making it more affordable for seniors to stay in their homes is a very good one as well. I don't think we can afford, define affordability narrowly. I think it needs to be defined in a way that creates and assures and preserves true diversity in our neighborhood, age, um, and other demographic factors as well. So, um, I would just put those things on the table as, as things to consider, and thank you again for your work, and I look forward to a community-wide discussion. And it's important to lay out to folks, if you do this, it means there's something else we may not be able to do, unfortunately. And the other thing I think we need to do is look regionally, statewide, and nationally, have we really tapped all the available programs and funding sources that we can use, that we could provide some match, if you will, that would magnify that. And I would say one of the great frustrations of my time on the council was when that project on South Maple was killed off by a prior council. So hopefully we can learn from that and, and move forward. So thanks.
And I would just note that the creative program that came together on Miller House is an example, a small scale, but nonetheless, it was, it was quite a partnership to, to bring that about, and I, you know, that was a long, long effort with a lot of work and, you know, some, some twists and turns, but it turned out to be, it seems like a great project and with a lot of partners, and so, you know, that's a, that's a congratulations. Too bad it's not 10 times bigger, but, you know, it's still, it's still a success story.
Well, it's a credit to your group, it's a credit to staff, and it's a credit to all the members of council that was a very creative approach, so thank you to everyone.
Ms. Ardi?
Thanks. Um, just something else I thought of, um, as we were discussing, I know that you've had, um, teachers participate in, um, the work group, but I would love to see more emphasis on just workforce housing. So as we think about kind of, um, how we're a small city and we have limited resources while we can partner outside of our jurisdiction, I think where we can make it the biggest impact is helping city and school employees to be able to afford to live in the city. I think it helps us for a number of places, but I think we have a few teacher workforce units, but it would be great if we could see more focus on that in the future.
Yeah, and I, and I think we had some very interesting discussions. I do think, by the way, the teachers were very good at reflecting the unit, the workforce in general. I mean, they recognized they weren't the only workers that they were representing, so they were very good about that. Um, and we also talked about the limitations of the way the current workforce housing units or the teacher housing units at the Reed Building aren't necessarily working because the way they're set up doesn't allow them to be filled all the time. There are openings, and Bob Young can go into detail about the challenges, and, and maybe there are some ways to restructure that program, um, to take more advantage of it. But there were some, it was a great idea and it worked for a number of people, but it's not perfect, and it may require some, some adjustments in the way that, you know, is structured and the covenants that go into it.
Yeah.
Because it was great for a while, but, you know, salaries went up and all of a sudden, you're only eligible for a year. And, uh, it's great the salaries went up, but on the other hand, it has some impacts.
Yep, and I'd like to expand that thinking to whether it's just city and school employees or anyone working in the city, because I think there's many other professions who can't afford to live in the city as well.
And, and that's a point, that's a very important point. We did not get into detail there, but that's a very important point as to how you define that and how you target that.
Great, thanks.
Let's, uh, yeah, if I could, just talk about that further as we go on, too, because like out in the county, you know, they had a debate in their circles about, uh, increasing the AMI to capture, I mean, you're never going to say that public employees and teachers make enough money, they just don't, but the way the numbers work, you know, the AMI needs to get up to like 150, maybe even 160 around here, because around here, things are so expensive, you can be making 160% of AMI and still be, you know, living out of a cheeto box. So we need to, um, explore whether that's an area that we, maybe we are equipped to serve that community where we're not equipped to serve the 30% community in our borders, but we could do, you know, a good, a good by doing that.
I think one of the most challenging conversations we had probably over two meetings was, what is AMI? How is it calculated? But not only that, how is it used? Because not only is it used for eligibility, but then it's used to set the rents. I mean, there's multiple ways AMI comes in. It's not as simple as you would think. And we actually put some language in here to define it and provide a bit of an example as to how it falls into the policy, and I don't think it's unfair to look at that and say, is this the way we want this to work as we go forward? Because I, for those of you who were there, it was, it was not a simple conversation at the beginning, and it took a while to really clarify it and make it understandable to everybody in the room, so.
One final thought, and, uh, as if we don't have enough to load onto this wagon as it is, but, you know, if we're going to call it affordable living, one component of affordable living are accessory dwelling units, and that is a topic that is, Mr. Z and Mr. Snyder, and those of you who've been around for a while, certainly I remember a discussion about it that gets very heated, you know? People, uh, don't necessarily care for it. I mean, if you look at the cottages, railroad cottages, in some sense, that's, they're sort of like the accessory dwelling units of the houses that, you know, were established before that, that project was approved. And, you know, I personally, you know, supported it, think it's a great addition, and I understand that other, others may not have that view, but accessory dwelling units in parts of town where, you know, the lot sizes could support it is, is one way to help seniors stay on their property, you know? They move back to the back in the accessory dwelling unit and their kids take over the house. I mean, it's almost like naturally occurring retirement situation, age and place option, and that could be, you know, another card in the deck that we could, uh, put into the game.
All right, well, listen, I think we've started or continued a spirited, good discussion to be had, and, um, we appreciate the good work you've done, and look forward to hearing more from you and the group in the coming days and weeks, and so thank you again for the fine work you've done.
Great, thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Shields, do we want to maybe move on and talk about some flooding issues that have affected some folks in town pretty severely the past couple of days?
Can I just ask one question? Would the next step be to recommend this for boards and commissions comment? Okay.
That should be, I believe, next week, right?
Yes, that'd be on the agenda for next week. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
So I did want to give, give council a briefing on, on the flooding over the weekend, and just, uh, we're, we're still in the process of our assessment and in response, uh, but I can give you a sort of a point in time briefing in terms of, uh, what happened over the weekend, uh, the numbers of people affected, our initial assessment of, of, of some of the conditions. So, uh, you know, for anybody who was in the city on, on either Friday night or Saturday night, we had heavy rains both nights. Both of those were featured, uh, very slow-moving thunderstorms, and, um, in an event like that, the flooding is. And in an event like that, the flooding is extremely localized. For both events, we had even in a city of 2.2 square miles, extremely different impacts in different parts of even our 2.2 square miles. Three, you know, two miles away, they might have had very little rain, whereas in our location, we had periods of very intense rainfall. In terms of what you can tell regionally, the best gauge for that is just to look at the Four Mile Run or the Cameron Run river gauges. Both of those did show that those streams got into flood stage on Friday night and then were just below flood stage on Saturday night. But again, those are big watersheds, and what I think the city experienced were cells of intense rain from a slow-moving thunderstorm. On the, for the combined nights, the phone calls into DPW or into dispatch, we had 20 calls. We are pretty sure that there were more people affected than called in directly to dispatch, but that's just one, you know, those are the ones that called us and we responded to over the weekend just to investigate. I do want to note the DPW was working through the weekend, and Single Out Robert Goff, our head of operations, who visited, I think, every household that contacted dispatch or DPW directly to contact those owners. He did provide sandbags where appropriate. Very often, what the situation is, is it's a, you know, a water coming down the street or in a low-lying area, and, you know, if that water then jumps out and gets down into a driveway or shoots down into a garage, sandbags can actually make a huge difference in diverting that water, keeping it away from your structure and protecting your property. Since the weekend, really during today, in the areas where we experienced the greatest localized flooding, we have run our TV camera through the pipes. We were actually, in one area in particular, kind of hoping to find an obstruction, because we had, you know, one branch, Harrison branch, which feeds into Four Mile Run, is we're kind of all along Harrison branch, we had problems. But we found the system to be clean. And so we will keep the communication going. We intend to meet with the homeowners, to share all the information that we have. And we also want to hear from homeowners so that we can assess our system, where it failed, and understand that and take appropriate responses based on the best information that we have. I'll end this report just with a note of, it is extremely distressing when you have water flowing into your house from the street and filling up your basement. And it's, you know, for the homeowners that experience that, it's exhausting. And it also, you know, I've spoken with homeowners who they just, you know, you're just very much on edge. When you hear that heavy rain and you start thinking about it coming again, it's just a very upsetting thing. It is important that if you, you know, for anyone out in the city that experienced that, to let us know, because that's information that's useful for us for assessing our system. It's somewhat similar to Dominion Power. They need to get those phone calls in so they know where the power is out, similarly for our stormwater system. Sanitary backflows, we had some calls, we may still get some additional ones, but in prior flooding events, we've had a higher number of those. This event, we did not get many calls for sanitary sewer backflows. The area of East Columbia, Midvale, Nolan, Lawton, and East Jefferson, that seems to be sort of the string. That's the Harrison branch in particular, where we had certain, a series of people who had water flowing off the street, onto their property, and then down into their basements. And so we'll continue to work with those neighbors. Again, the goal is to share as much information. We'll sit down and talk with them. We're going to probably meet in some, in some backyard meetings just to touch base with the neighbors. They have questions, and we want to exchange all the information that we have with them. So that's the report that I have at this point, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor Connolly?
Is the Harrison branch area one of those that is in the stormwater plan to be repaired in coming years? Where is it on the, our list of problem areas?
Well, it actually is, it's an on, it's an active project right now. But what that project is, is to daylight the portion that is in the Crossman Park. Now, that will help to some extent. A daylight, a daylight stream can convey more water than a pipe stream can. Where the damage was, though, was upstream of that. And if you can have sort of, I don't have the map that we can put on the wall, but Harrison branch first crosses the cul-de-sac of East Jefferson, then it crosses East Columbia, and then it goes up to Midvale. And those are all the areas, you know, upstream of where we're planning to daylight. The, but there are, in our watershed management plan, for instance, the properties at East Columbia, they are noted in that plan as a potential project. So as we do our assessment of the system, we'll be looking at what can be done and work then with those neighbors on discussing what the options are, what the timeline is, and making sure they have that information.
Vladdy Hardy?
Thanks, Vladdy. Please tell Robert also thank you for putting in so much extra care. I know that he works extra hours on those times. I wasn't in town for this, but I think it was a weekday. There was probably, I think, let me look through my emails, August 21st, and there was a big midday storm. And I got photos texted from my neighbors where I think the stream on South Spring had overflowed into the street. Did we get calls then, too? Was there flooding in houses then?
We did, not as many as we did, though, on Friday night and Saturday night. And that is another example of how local these events can be. We had Trips Run, or the Pearson branch, out of its banks, right there at the Scout House. The rest of Trips Run actually was, stayed well within its banks, and Four Mile Run didn't rise up very high at all. It's really remarkable that with these thunderstorms, there can be that differentiation on a, in such a small area. But that August rain that you're referring to, that, up to that point, had been the largest rainfall we'd had since Tropical Storm Lee. Then Friday night is the largest that we've had of the whole summer. And Saturday night, which, where we had actually the greater number of complaints on Harrison bank, on the Harrison branch that I just referred to, regionally was a smaller event Friday night than it was, Saturday night was a smaller event regionally than Friday night was, but we had more local events on Saturday night than we did on Friday night.
I would note, Mike Whitfield also was out there quite a bit, and I think he basically was going toe-to-toe with Robert Goff. Go ahead, Mr. Z.
So, you know, I used to suffer flooding in my basement quite often, and until I finally figured out the thing I needed to do was put in exterior sump pumps as well as interior sump pumps. And the other thing I did was put in a whole-house generator, because it finally dawned on me, it made no sense to have pumps and have the power go out. So now I don't have any flooding. But there is one unforced error I want to report to you and just make a note of it at the next staff meeting for DPW. The work that's ongoing on the intersection of Pennsylvania and Great Falls, so these filters that go into the, get stuffed into the culverts, and I guess they call them filter pigs. And so they were left in there after the workmen left.
Yeah.
And as consequence, John Ward and Bridget Craft suffered extensive water damage to the basement and to their car as well. So, I mean, that's a lot of water. You know, they're fine citizens. The most she did, aside from calling you all kinds of names, was ask whether anyone could spare any wet drive acts to help them out. So maybe a word to the wise that if there's a storm predicted that in the future, you remove those impediments to stormwater flow.
That's right. We're very aware of that situation, and we're in touch with Mr. Ward and Ms. Craft.
Yeah, I think it's important to get to the bottom of what's causing this. I mean, there could be all sorts of things. You have obstruction, which you look for. Could be a temporary obstruction, something in the middle of it. You've got the filters. Could be capacity. In other words, that you need a six-foot line instead of a five-foot line. Could be in Arlington. Are you coordinating with Arlington? Because this flows into Arlington County. I think we ought to be coordinating and finding out what happened on their side of the fence.
Yeah, I'll just, I don't mean to interrupt you. We have been in touch with Arlington County. They did experience similar types of localized flooding. Four Mile Run did get into flood stage, but all of the flooding that we experienced are, you know, higher elevation than Four Mile Run. So these were, I think, local, it's kind of block-by-block, block issues. And that's, you know, we want to, on a block-by-block basis, do the assessment and share that information with the homeowners, because they really, they need to know kind of what to expect when there's a heavy rain.
Yeah, some of them have contacted me and said, "Look, I, you know, what am I supposed to do if I'm going to get a next one when it rains next week? I don't want to do all these repairs and then turn around and get flooded again." And so I think we really got to get on this quickly and try to figure out what's the problem. Have you sent cameras down? I don't know what else. There was a hydrology study, I think, a period of years ago. I don't know if that's still, I don't, look, I'm not capable of solving your problem, but I do think we need to get on it right away, and I definitely think we ought to be communicating with those neighbors on a regular basis so they know what's going on and have a line of communication with the city. So, anyway, I did see staff out there on, over the holiday weekend, and they were doing a great job meeting with people, so I think that's well appreciated. Okay.
I sense, could I just?
Yes, of course.
I sense that from the mayor's comments, that one of the privileges of being the mayor is that he gets an inordinate number of calls of this nature when the rain falls. And just to maybe follow along the lines of what Vice Mayor Connolly was saying, you know, as we look ahead to next year's budget and the stormwater management fee and the stormwater utility and its infrastructure program, you know, I think it would be helpful to have a conversation that's maybe a little more robust than we've had a chance to have since we stood up the stormwater utility about how the, you know, 100-year floods now seem to come twice a summer. And, you know, if that is a reality, then maybe we're not charging enough of our stormwater fee, and we're not doing enough work. Maybe there's more that we could do, or at least to have a conversation with the public that says, you know, we could fix every problem that could ever arise, and it would cost, you know, X-plus. Or we could do what we think is prudent, and it will cost X. And X is sort of what we're pursuing right now. It does seem to have some deficiencies, so the public just needs to know that we do have a, we do have a plan. And maybe them being aware of what the priorities are for work on that plan would be another component of it, you know? They're going to get around to my neighborhood in a couple of years. Or maybe it's not going to be for 10 years. That might help people decide what they're going to do in their own basements about, you know, adding generators and sump pumps and so forth.
I don't think this is a problem that's going to get solved by sump pumps. I hit a couple of the houses, or I went by a few of the houses, and there's water that was feet high, and it blew open doors because of the water pressure. And I just think that this, we've got to find a more systemic solution to this problem. I don't think it's going to be a house-by-house problem, but anyway, that's what you're going to be working on. I know you're already hard at work at that right now. Yes, of course, Vice Mayor Connolly.
Mr. Shields, what about the areas where we have put in some stormwater mitigation? Did it work there? Did those areas flood?
We, I believe it did.
That's good.
And I think that needs to be part of the assessment as well.
I think it does, yeah.
The, you know, some of the preliminary data, just as an example, and this was eye-opening for me, that if you look at the flood gauges on Four Mile Run and Trips Run, this actually was a similar event to Tropical Storm Lee of 2011. Now, I need, we need to understand that a little bit more, and again, it's very localized. But if you think of the flooding that happened in 2011, it was significantly more than what happened this weekend. Now, again, we want our assessment to be driven by the facts and a good, clear understanding. But a lot of what we've been doing since we created the stormwater utility is just dedicated maintenance, and that makes a huge difference. And we have also, with the capital projects, we're better on detention, and we have straightened out some of the traditional problem areas. And so I think we did experience the benefit of that in the three big rains that we've had this summer. And what it, what the situation is, and you can, particularly for people who've lived here for a long time, you can, you kind of get a sense of what causes flooding. But a long rain, the city can handle an inch an hour basically all day long, but when you get into an inch and a half an hour, that's when, that intensity, that short burst, is where things get out of the system and cause property damage. And that's what happened on Friday and Saturday night, sort of in layman's terms.
So I suspect there are a lot of variables operating here at the same time, and I think it's important to pull them apart and analyze each one. And we've heard some of them, I think DPW clearly needs to be out there, able to respond. We need to look at our infrastructure, both what it's doing positively, which I think is significant, as well as what more we need to do. I recall several years ago, we looked at our flood maps for purposes of the FEMA flood insurance program. I think we need to look at those again. Most jurisdictions have seen an expansion of flooding, and so we're not unique in that way. Perhaps there's some additional information we could put out to people to suggest that they need to look at that seriously, because the tendency is unless I'm in the flood plain and unless the bank tells me I have to buy flood insurance, I don't buy flood insurance. And so I think there may be a public information element to that. I don't want us to be in the business of selling insurance, but I think there's a, there's an element here of private compensation that's essential. And as you move up the ladder, then you look at regional development, and you look at what we're trying to do regionally. And then you look at the federal government, which is increasingly obviously turning its back on everything environmental and contributing to climate change, which is, we understand from the best science, leads to more of these kinds of rain events. So it seems to me it's a top-to-bottom analysis. No one element of this is going to solve the entire problem, but I think we've talked about some of the components, but there may be some additional policy components as well that we want to think about. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update. Did you have any other updates?
Just a brief note on parking. Because of the rain, the striping, that hasn't been long-promised, to delineate the parking spaces, not yet out, but we do, we do plan to get that on the street, really as soon as we can have a window where the contractor can get in to get that work done. I just wanted to note for parking, particularly in our commercial districts, that staff and council and the EDA are working to do a couple of things. One, to really help the public to clarify and expand parking in our commercial districts to the best extent possible. And some of that's going to be better signage, better paint marking for those spaces. As already has been noted, we've increased the on-street parking on our streets, created 25 spaces that way, but there's more to be done. One note that I would have as an outside resource, Jim Snyder is working with George Mason University, and we're going to have a class that will come in to help us with some analysis of our, of our commercial parking, assess needs, kind of what the quantity of parking is, what the usage is. And that's going to be a benefit to the students, but I think we are going to shape that study hopefully so that it's useful for our business owners in our commercial district as well. That's going to be occurring over this fall, and I think we'll get some recommendations over that, and we'll carry those out. All the work that we're trying to do on parking, we do want to do in partnership with the business owners. I think it's really important that we're trying to solve this problem together. Councilmember Vladdy Hardy with the EDC has been working this issue for several years now as well, and has, you know, been encouraging an approach where we try to do those things that we can to make it better in the short term and also plan for the longer term as well. And then one other note I'll just make on the topic that, that, you know, the part- the parking problems that, that we do have in, in the commercial district are partly a function of the vibrancy of, of the growing vibrancy of our commercial district, and particularly if you think of the Oddfellows Hall and the, and the blue and gray building, those were empty buildings with no activity at all, and now they're, they're both very active. So that whole part of our downtown area is just a much more vibrant and active area, and that's a good thing. But we want to help all of our, our business owners manage parking to the best extent possible.
Well, thank you for the update Wyatt, or Mr. Shields. We definitely appreciate it. It's something I think we'll be wanting to work more on and try to improve the parking to attract more businesses or more customers to our businesses and patrons and the like. But I think having someone coordinate that effort, maybe Ms. Hardy, since you've already done some work on this, would be a good thing on, from council perspective, to act as a liaison and to kind of head up the effort. I don't know what other people think of it, but I thought, I think you'd be a wonderful person to be doing that.
Yeah, I'd love to. I think last time we talked about kind of chartering a task force to work on this. I think, like you said Wyatt, we've already informally talked about this in EDA and EDC. The Chambers has interest in working on this. The businesses I've met with want to get involved, and I think, to your point, it needs to be a collaborative effort. So if it gives the effort more focus and thrust to really prioritize what, you know, what we think, the easy ideas that we should be going after are, like the painting, the better signage, the education. I'd love to stand up something more formally like a task force. I don't think it has to be a decision-making body. I think ultimately can make recommendations back to council, but I think that would also help staff instead of hearing from 10 different groups about what their ideas are to help with parking. Maybe that could be, you know, the, the central body that, where a lot of discussion happens. So I'm happy to help work on that.
Okay. Was there a consensus to go forward on that from everyone? Okay. Well, why don't you lead those efforts and let us know what we can do to help you. All right. So I think that's it for most of our, or all of our business that's in open session. We do have council schedule requests. Are there any council?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do, a couple. The innovation and technology task force that appears on our agenda of things to do. I'd appreciate some sort of a report on that in about two weeks. Also, I attended a three-hour session at the invitation of Arlington County Board Member, and the program is a three-hour program called Be the Help Until Help Arrives, which is basically layman training in, in bleed control, breathing, and circulation for if you're in the, in a situation where you're there before the first responders are there. So I would like to provide this to you and ask, again, within two weeks, a report on, is this something the city should commence? And it was done by the, for the Arlington County Board, so I wonder if the other council members would like that, if we'd want a similar program for council and for others who might be interested. So I'll pass this around to folks. It was a very well-done program by a member of the Arlington County Fire Department. Thank you.
All right, thank you. One of you two. Who wants to go next? Vice Mayor Connolly, you're it.
I've got about 10 calendar questions for the month of September.
Vlade Hardy?
Does Vlade Hardy have just a short one, and then I'll?
I have 10. I have three or four.
All right, well, let's just move on to the closed session then.
So that's like 13 total.
13 total. September 6th, there's a conflict? There's two meetings scheduled, two important meetings scheduled at the same time?
It's the Founder's Row and George Mason.
Founder's Row, and then the George Mason High School Subcommittee Meeting.
Busy city, so much for the little city.
Right. I want, want to make sure that those meetings are taped. Will FCC TV be able to be there? And then I'm going to request that, because I know that George Mason meeting has been on the calendar for a long time, that the next time that there's a meeting that city planners are planning, if they would please check the school calendar as well to make sure. I don't know where that meeting came from, the September 6th.
Development driven, isn't it?
Yeah, but we could tell.
Yeah, I will say that that meeting is sponsored by Mill Creek, and it really is a direct follow-up to a council request on the night of approval of their SC. The council asked that they have another meeting. We struggled to find a night, and obviously we found one that wasn't ideal. And I think the goal, well, at any rate, they've kind of gone off, we had a hard time finding a date.
Yeah.
That's where we landed. So in terms of taping it, I'll need to, I don't know the details of, of how that's going to be handled that night. So let me get back with you.
Okay.
But I understand the impulse.
Is the substance of the meeting on September the 6th on the school side substantially different from the meeting in August or not?
I think it's a follow-on to that meeting, so whatever was discussed on the 5th, and comment, community comments that have come from there, there are these seven subcommittees that will be meeting, and anyone can join a subcommittee to discuss specific aspects of the product, but, project, but also an update of changes that have gone into the high schools since that August 5th meeting.
So that was my question about the structure of the meeting. Is it mostly a plenary session kind of meeting where they cover the things that were covered in August plus a few updates? Or is it mostly a, here we all are all together, now we're going to break up into subcommittees and go into classrooms and do our work? Is it A or B?
I'd say half and half.
It's both.
Yeah, I think it's both. So that's the 6th. That's just a concern, and I'm just wondering if we could check calendars better in the future as these meetings get planned. September 7th is the tailgate party? How do I do this? If you have a meeting as I'm going through them. September 7th is the Athletic Business Tailgate Party, and they did send an invitation to City Council if we wanted to be there. I don't know if anyone else is planning on being there. There's to talk about our campus project and what has come in from the developers.
Whether we have posters or boards to put up from the high school plans, whether that's in the works.
The, the schools will have some stuff, and I think the developer's going to mark the footprint of the school with flags because the tailgate will take place where the school is, and I think there'll be some posters as well. Will there be something that the city can put up about what was replied to on our RFP?
We can have information sheets and copies of the executive summaries.
Okay. The reason I ask, this is, there's going to be several hundred people there, people that wouldn't normally come to meetings, and it would be really a good community education opportunity. And then the same with September 15th, which is the Fall Festival. Will there be a booth up then as well? Shall we plan to set up a City Council booth, or a what's going on with the campus project? I would like to ask that we do that.
Are we going to have a, the city's going to have a booth, but we're not going to be, like, has to, has council members stay at that location throughout the day, right? Because some of us have other groups that we've already committed to on that day.
No, I don't think we should be, have to stay there the whole time, but I think there needs to be a community information effort. It's four, four hours, the Fall Festival's four hours. So there should be a way to have coverage so that as community members come by, we can say, "Hey, look, here's the new high school plans, and this is what we're hoping to do next door with commercial development," the same kind of public information. And if we divide it up and everybody take an hour, or a staffer there for part of it, if there's just a way to get that information out, I just think that's really important.
Okay, so somebody will do, sign-up genius for that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the run for the schools is Sunday, September 16th. We've had a team the past couple of years, and Ross wants a shirt.
Yeah, I just ordered him one, on vacation.
Excellent. So we have a shirt, so.
Is it walk for the schools?
Yes, could definitely be a walk for the schools, or even just, wear a shirt, a volunteer for the schools also works.
Send a link out to register so we can be registered as City Council.
Very good, thank you. You had sent a message last week, Mr. Shields, about the Budget and Finance Committee had wanted to have a joint meeting with the City Council and the School Board, a social gathering. Are we any closer to a date on that?
So Celeste Heath is working with Marty Goodell to, and so she'll send an email to you all to coordinate on a date, and so if you could look for that email. I think that'll come tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right. I think that's all my calendar stuff.
All right, Ms. Hardy, what you got?
The good news, I had some of those too, so I won't have to go back through those. I saw a note that Arlington is starting up their Lee Highway planning efforts all the way from Roslin all the way to East Falls Church. They've talked about kind of where it makes sense to increase density, where they want to put affordable housing, so I thought we should definitely get plugged into that. They're starting this fall, from what I read, and I think John Vicestad and Katie Kirstal both mentioned wanting to actually do a lot of affordable housing in that corridor. So I thought that might be a good opportunity to think about partnering, given that we are right there. Indigenous Peoples' Day is coming up, so last year, I think, was the first year that we had a proclamation recognizing it as the same day as Columbus Day. And so we can't unrecognize Columbus Day, but I think what I asked last year for us to consider for this year, it'd be nice for us to formally recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day beyond a proclamation by council. So I don't know whether we have the ability to say that, whatever, October, whatever date is Columbus Day and Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we're closing the library for that reason. But I think it'd be a nice gesture to recognize that at the city level, even if we can't unrecognize another holiday.
Is Columbus Day a holiday?
It is an official state holiday.
But I mean, is, like, the library open on that day or not open?
No.
No, we, we're closed.
City government's closed?
Yep.
Okay.
So do we have the power, I guess, to recognize an additional holiday, for the same day?
So the City Council does, so that would need to be an action by the City Council, I believe, and so we can work on the process for doing that.
Okay. We're not adding a new holiday, it's just, it's the same day still.
Right.
Okay.
All right, anything else? We do have a closed session now, if, unless someone else has anything to say. All right, let's get, do it. We're going to move to closed session here, so I'm going to go ahead and read.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that. Upon a motion, this is the motion regarding closed session, upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
And seconded by council member.
Spider.
And passed by voice vote of City Council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A28, for discussion or consideration of information subject to the exclusion in subdivision 11 of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3705.6, where making such information public prior to entering into an interim or comprehensive agreement will adversely affect the financial interest or bargaining position of the public entity. Councilwoman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hardie?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Lipton House is not here. Councilwoman Snyder.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Z.
Yes.
And Tartar here, yes. Okay, we are in closed session. Why don't we give it a minute to get the cameras down, and we'll reconvene in just a couple of minutes here. And passed by vote of City Council, council reconvened, open session. Councilwoman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardy.
Yes.
Lipton House is absent. Councilwoman Snyder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Z.
Yes.
Councilwoman Tartar. We're coming out at 9:56. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
And seconded by council member.
Duncan.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote, an open session was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting were convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session or meeting by the City Council. Councilwoman Connolly.
Yes.
Councilwoman Duncan.